We will open the meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, this is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody's recording, that is fine. You just need to let us know.
Okay.
Sure, let me speak up.
I will.
Yeah. Um, yeah, why don't you grab, you can just put it over there. Yeah. That's perfect.
Thank you.
Um, all right, seven o'clock town planners report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's what I'm to report on since our last meetings. Had a meeting with representatives of Kearsars Energy. They run the solar photovoltaic array on the south side of Conga Bottom Road. Planning board members will most recently recall interacting with them on an approval not required plan and a special program modification where that operator acquired the acreage um containing and surrounding to a certain degree that solar array and extending on out to Conga My Road. The particular nature of the conversation surrounded a proposed uh storage facility or warehouse uh to be cited upon that parcel. This, when looking at the usable land that was acquired um and defined on that A and R, it really is between the limits, we call the northern limits of the solar array and Conga Mountain Road. So the portion right now that's currently uh, I believe it's currently grown corn. Um, the size, particular location, um extent or timing of the project was not explored. This is more of a, we'll call it a zoning overview. I did share with representatives from here's our energy that screening was going to be an important factor in order to ensure or at least build towards compatibility uh with the surrounding residential um and small business neighborhood in that area. Uh, so at this time, I don't have any particular details, no diagrams, but I did want to share that the session was had. Any information shared with that. I did a meet, I went alongside the building inspector um and Brian Schneider from the fire department uh over at the former Roma Restaurant to discuss their ideas for internal reconfiguration in reuse of the property. As board members may be aware, uh, there is one proposal on the table that utilizes a portion of that building uh for marijuana retail sales. Um, the remainder of the building, it appears will be retained for restaurant and banquet room purposes. Uh, from a planning perspective, well, we'll say uh the whole permit aspect of uh marijuana retail use at that site aside, the remainder of the reconfiguration should be something they can define, uh, at least bring forward to me so I can compare and see if the presumed uh lighter footprint from a zoning standpoint is indeed uh the case. So I think in the coming months, you're likely to see at least some feedback if not application to a network. Uh, lastly, I mentioned uh at a meeting with the owner of seventy-one Klein Road. Uh, this is on the southeast of East Side of Fine Road at Shortwood Brook, uh where there's, I think about thirteen to fifteen acres of land. Um, as you might presume in that location, we're uh both within our forty as well as uh certain portions of floodplain over the district. Um, and largely it came down to, oh, what can we do this night? So I shared a few ideas, but uh, because for them is going to be number one, determining soil suitability as that will be private sewage um and well serviceable water at that location. And that's all I have for the time present for this.
Okay. Um, seven oh five, probably comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda? Marcus.
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight Depot Street. I did listen to last evening's select board meeting. And at the end, Mr. Mowgli mentioned that they plan on moving forward with appointing members of the master plan implementation committee. So that's encouraging. Uh, the select board is going to do the appointments and there'll be three citizen members. And Mr. Mowgli did say preferably those citizen members would not be members, current members of boards, commissions, or committees. And I know Norm Cheever had been interested in being on that group, so I guess it's a preference that Mr. Mowgli is expressing rather than a requirement. But they will be appointing three people and of course, the planning board has one person to be on that committee. So hopefully you'll be appointing someone soon and they'll be able to move on that. It's been a little while since the plan's been out and I know you just approved it in April, early April. So anyway, that's all. Thanks.
All right, um, any other public comments, sir?
Say, my name is Fran Mason. I own sixty-five acres on top of Sider Mountain and uh simply I'd like to punch a well in front of my barn to use for everything you use water for and uh I don't know if I need a permit or where I need to start.
So uh, my suggestion uh would be to talk to come in, uh, come in during regular business hours.
Yes.
Um, and I mean, there's probably a bunch of different boards you could speak to. Um. Do you mind, John, if he comes and as you sort of direct him?
I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, I see. I know where you are over there in the corner. I stop in to see you.
Absolutely. Uh, Monday through Thursday, nine to one that office is staffed. Except for the remainder of this week.
What's that?
Except for the remainder of this week, I'm out this week.
Yeah, I'm going on vacation myself too.
Good, then we'll, we'll see you next weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, come by, friend.
All right, anything else um for public comments? Okay. Seven ten P M. Continued public hearing, six sixty-two A College Highway.
We have a continuous request from history boiling applicants uh to August twentieth.
Okay. Um. Some point we're gonna have to start here. Um, once we get into the call, probably not mind keeping out the sound like. Um, so do I hear a motion to continue six sixty-two A College Highway to seven ten P M on August twentieth? Is that right?
Yes.
Dave's being so moved.
Take a second, second.
He's here. Where'd he come from?
Been here, been here.
Michael Doherty, I.
Dave's been a I.
Here comes singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Jessica Bart, and I.
Okay. Um. Seven fifteen P M, continued public hearing of Oak Ridge Estates at Mort Vining Road. Sorry, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
Steve Salvini, Salvini. This is another recap. I guess we're squared away with our sister from the fire chief. We have our mail boxes set up and all good to go for design and where their placement is. And I sent uh yesterday, last night, generally remember when uh we took lot four, which is the long lot. And I took two acres off the back of that, connected it with a easement and that puts us, when I uh I then recalculated taking out the basins from the little open area. And so without the, without the basins, that was five point five seven acres and then we added two. So we're at seven point six something, which gives us ten percent open space as requested.
Not including the bases.
Not.
No, um. Okay. Um. Is, go ahead.
I just want to recommend, Steve, I've got the uh that revised sheet up there. If you could just point out for the board members where that acreage resource there.
Okay, so Mort Wayne's out here, he come in on the barrel lane, it would be country road. Lot four was here, we took this acreage, two acres off the back of it. We're connecting with the twenty foot right away through here to, or easement to get to it. Combined with the other open space areas gives us our intention.
What's that easement gonna end up being? Is it just wooded or is it gonna be cleared? Is it gonna be?
Well, they're probably up to the whole more association I assume, but it'd be, it's a, it's a twenty foot strip that can be used to access that.
So the only thing taken out though is this, the, the exact dimensions of the bases. Right, I mean, that's
Yeah, right.
The rest of that
Well, um, right, except, well.
It's being, except for the wetlands, obviously.
Yes. No, 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 the wetlands are not included in the
No, 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 I'm saying the rest of the area other than the wetlands and the actual basis.
Correct, that, that ended up being five point five and then we added this two acres.
Um.
Get an amen.
I mean, here's, here's what I would say. I mean, I guess I wonder why we, you know, to actually satisfy the intent of the bylaw. Why do we need, why do you need a nine acre parcel right there? And you do have a lot of land in that parcel that could be used for open space and probably
So the suggested formula was ten percent. And we're at ten percent.
So. It is not a, the bylaw doesn't say you need ten percent of land that is not dedicated to private ownership. It of, you know, for residences.
Sure.
The, the bylaw doesn't say, you know, take out the wetlands and take out the lots that you have for, for selling residences or putting residences on and that's your open space. The bylaw has a specific intent behind what the open space is to be used for. And to me, it is somewhat um, it, it is somewhat circumvented if you just have these areas of open space that are basically not, they just happen to be open, they're not usable in any way, shape or form when you have a lot that is, well, now nine acres was eleven acres with space that really could be accessible and used for, for the purpose of this.
I don't, I don't think you're seeing what I'm seeing because the stormwater basins three and two offer open spaces that were people actually with ease get to and, and actually be able to walk and, and enjoy that open space to a degree. Whereas a lot of open spaces that are designed have, are just woods and they're, that's all they are. We have taken two acres off of the back of a lot with a twenty foot right, uh, easement to get to it, which is in keeping with other forms of open space that have been generated as a, as a guide for us to use. So the open space requirement just says that it's, it's not used for development, which means the basins weren't included.
It's not what it says. It's not what it says. That is absolutely one hundred percent, not what the bylaw says.
When you're you, when you're using calculating what land is acceptable as open space, you can't use develop.
That's correct.
That's what I was getting, that's what I, that's what I meant to say if I didn't say.
That does not mean that the rest of it is included in the open space calculation. I mean, there is a purpose behind this. It's not just.
Right, but there's nothing that says it's got to be ten percent of contiguous property.
It has an intent behind what it is to be used for and to and to sort of circumvent that by having these little spots that aren't really usable. I, I, I just have concerns about that. I mean, I, I
I, I
And I guess I don't really quite understand the the purpose when it's not like it's not available, right? I mean, you do have a lot that was eleven acres. And I assume that at most, a couple acres of that is going to be used for the actual development, probably somewhere up front near the roadway.
I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking of it. I personally think that that central area of open space would probably get used more than most other open spaces can use. Because it's central to where everybody lives and it's easy access. It's very easy access to get to those pieces of, of open space areas. Very easy. And again, it's within the center of the design. And so I can visualize people out walking around on the outside of the sidewalk, going across the street and walking on some paths through there that they built. It's much more centrally located.
I, I'll open, I mean, that's my concern. Oh, how long is the right away from where is the cul-de-sac to the?
Uh, you can put that in the screen, John.
Sure. Yeah, these been, sorry, yeah, yeah, it's like, it's like a thousand feet.
Yeah.
Basically.
So.
Point to a lot of.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, this is eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Thousand feet.
Yep. I, I, you know, if we're using, if we're using past examples, which, I mean, I think there's, there's some relevance to that, but it's not entirely, um, you know, constraining us. But if we look at the greens, I, I thought that was a, that was a property which had an easement over a property um to get to the open space. It seemed like open space that was reasonably usable with trails and what have you. And the easement was pretty short to get there. It was off of the cul-de-sac or near the end of the cul-de-sac there. And, and a couple hundred feet, yeah, something like that, not even, I would say, yeah. And right, they had the big discussion about the marking of the stones. I mean, that's to me is, you know, a reasonable sort of
You're still gonna have a long easement to get to, even if we made the seven acres out back, you're still gonna have a long easement to get to it. And I really don't see people using that as freely as they would use the other, the other two portions.
Man, is that a wooded area right now? Is it all wooded?
Yeah. It's all woods.
I what's to say that people wouldn't use that?
I, I think you're gonna find that the people that buy into these, the subdivision, big lots, big houses are probably not woodland type people.
They're probably people with kids who have bikes and wanna go drive around.
And they've got a sidewalk, they got streets and the, the, the central location, I really do believe would get used way more than, than if we took it all and put it on lot four.
But the central location that you're talking about, which is on the road, like isn't, at least one or two of them.
Well, the first, the, the one on the south for a lot is uh the south entrance and it's a six acre lot with wetlands and then the uh, there's three acres there.
On the road.
On the road, there's three acres of open space that we had thought about. Uh, Marcus, when he was on the board, had the suggestion of putting some benches there that people could sit, put some birdhouses in there, people could sit and enjoy nature. Uh, it's a great spot and it's for easy access. The, the other one in the center coming off of uh Gare Lane coming from the north. We're gonna have a drainage easement for that and then on top of that would be the path to get to the, the open space area. That's, that is a seventy-five thousand square foot lot that we took the basin out of and the rest of that is open space. And I, I really do believe that access is going to be much easier for those two things, much more open and inviting than traipsing through woods to get to some woods out in the back.
The property where the basin is and the bottom right as you're looking at the plants.
Yeah.
On the road, is that tree wall or is it just?
I don't know, it's, it's a combination of, it used to be all part of the field that was there and it's starting to grow up a little bit. So it's it's not, it's not wooded and could have benches and stuff put in there with birdhouses or whatever. And, and it's right by the, where the mailboxes are. Um, it's right at the entrance, it's right off the sidewalk, you could get to it, easy walk. The same with the other one, you're gonna have the drainage easement for the, for the, the uh, the basin. And on top of that, that's gotta be made, remain cleared because it's, has the piping. That would have a path on it right there that would be open and inviting to, to walk in. And so I really do believe that it would be much more inviting than even if we put all of it on lot four, tracing through woods to get to some open area that they, they don't know if they're there or not. No.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I guess the other problem with this sort of line of presentation is that you're basically acknowledging that that two acres taken off the back of it is kind of useless, right? I mean, I can't understand that that's
Well.
We're just kind of doing that to meet the requirement.
It's fulfilling your requirement. That's what, and, and this is, you know, not as
Again, it's
But it fulfills your requirement.
But he, no, but he, but and this is the same thing with the other decision that we gotta deal with tonight. I, I don't it, this isn't a black and white, you beat the number, you're good type of si- uh analysis. It's just not. And, and I, I, I would push back and disagree with that, that if you meet the number, you get your permit.
And I would say this is a definitive subdivision plan by right under zoning and we fulfill the zoning requirements for open space.
Did I say something?
Yeah, please do, Terry.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I would, you know, I know, I know Steve has been pressing on, on the two, on the two other lots, the basin lots. And you know, the, I think one thing that need to consider is, you know, one thing that's nice about having all three is, is you're giving three different sort of variations of areas for people to go. So you have that, the southern frontage lot that is the wet meadow, that's gonna have its own sort of habitats and attractions seasonally. Um, that there's a, you know, vernal pool all the way in the back and that sort of thing. You've got the middle basin that is more of an upland, it's gonna have a different sort of feel. Both of those are really set up for a nice little walking trail. And then I would not say the two acres all the way in the back is gonna be useless. It's a, it's, it'll be a different experience. You, you know, you can walk back there and basically that's a, a little dipped area in the back. Um, that's treeed and it is somewhat of a meadow back there. Um, but that, that could also be a, another area that, that people can walk. Now that would be a longer walk that people may not wanna do on a regular basis. The other ones can be shorter walks where you go out and you do a little quick jaunt through, through that open space. But by having all three, it does really provide a nice variety of different areas that people can utilize and enjoy.
And I, I mean, Terry, I'm not sure I disagree with that. I, I mean, I do, but I do think may also think the logistics of that two acres on the back is, is, I don't know how you deal with that. I mean, that, that homeowner in the front is not gonna develop more than an acre or two have it as a defined area of property. You're then gonna have another seven acres of wooded area back there that is privately owned by that homeowner, but I mean, how do you, you're gonna delineate for a thousand feet what that path is gonna be and clear it out? I mean, I, an easement with trees in the middle of it is not an easement. I mean, it's not again, it doesn't sort of satisfy the purpose of it. We, and, and the greens, we had them delineate with markers where that path was.
You know, a flattened path was put in.
Mm-hmm. It's, 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 it's a, to me, it's not really workable to do that in any way, shape or form. I don't and again, I don't disagree with your, I, 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 your idea that there is these different areas. That makes some sense to me, but this one doesn't seem like it's offering much based on the way it is set up right now.
The what Terry was saying was kind of where I'm at, the, the woodland is, is designed, open space to be in its natural state. So we could delineate and put markers on where the limits are, the width of it. But the rest of it is just a hiking trail. You, you go through the woods. Uh, we don't have sidewalks out in the woods. So it's a, it's a trail to go through the woods uh to get to and enjoy.
It's not a trail, there's, and there're gonna be no, I mean
Well.
There is no trail and you're dealing with, you, you have to at least get probably another six hundred feet past where it's cleared to get to the actual part, which is you know, technically we open space. I mean, how are people gonna get back there and know where they need to go?
I would think that'd be kind of the fun of it.
Maybe not for that homeowner right there.
Well, I mean, we could, we can definitely delineate where the twenty foot wide easement access is.
For that a thousand feet.
It's just, it's just stuff you put out. I mean, we could, that could be delineated. That's not that complicated to do.
Narrow that down. You just gotta put like a, some, some markers with a little piece of tape around it.
Haven't thought that far ahead. I mean
Well, we have to think that far ahead.
I understand, so we could put markers on trees like the state forest does type of thing.
Oh, the ones that we've done before, there's been a trail or a path or a, a, a walkway that has been put in. Not a forested, delineated, hopefully you can find it at the end. I went on Google map and kind of looked to see where you're at and that circles what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Which is on the backside of two O two. And well, either no, not when you're stretching out a thousand feet coming in off Mort Vining, but there's no way to get to that. Now what's gonna keep somebody, hold on, let me finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
What's gonna keep somebody who's gonna, they're gonna need a compass and a guide to find out where the property line is to get to this if they do decide to go to it? That's what I'm saying. It needs to be, it needs to be
Okay.
Really delineated by a trail cleared of trees and something, a, a path put into where this place needs to be so they can use it. Not left to the homeowners association to decide what they wanna do.
And I don't see that as a huge problem to do.
But, but this is the question we're asking.
We could ask, you know, if Al's willing, maybe he can develop a, a trail loop through there.
Right.
Val is on, he could speak to that.
Well, these are questions that definitely should be looked at.
Yeah, I mean, I
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mike.
Yeah, good, go ahead.
Is this gonna just be for public use or just for people in the development?
Um. I can't. And now my brain is, is, it's not working. Where, where, you remember where we came down on that issue? Cause that got looked at by town council.
Right.
Well, yeah, there's a good question on that as well.
On the greens, and I just don't remember where.
The, the greens and those is a little bit of different beast.
Um. Or was it, was it a different one about things?
If I were to be told.
It came up.
And this was to be, we'd go away at home. Same as uh, over, in particular in concert with the stormwater management.
Right, I mean, I think it became, it was slightly it was successful to let people on the home on these structures.
That's
That's what I think it played out as.
It must have been some months
But it came up, I mean, it came up before um, we had town council look into it. I just
Yeah.
It's not
So the other thing that
Not delineated to that part of the brain. At the moment.
But I think, John, I mean, I think that's right. It's, it's
This is a little bit different beast now that we have a non-stormwater uh
Paris, but yeah.
A thousand feet trip into the woods along the, the proposed boundary line is gonna be a little difficult for anybody navigating.
So, so why don't we go back a step and say, look, we've got five point five acres out of uh required seven point acres of really usable, accessible, open space with below your ten percent suggested. But it makes a lot more sense than trying to make something like that. So if we, if you were to say, yeah, okay, that we'll take the five point five acres as opposed to the seven point something acres, ten percent was a guide, not a hard and fast and real. It makes much more usable space than trying to come up with something like that. Because that lot is long and narrow and you're gonna end up way out back. So, I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing to relook at those two areas actually and say, those are more usable, user friendly and easily accessible than some, than this, this older.
So Anything else?
Um, I just texted Val cause he can't get his uh audio to work, but he said he would be willing to develop a trail out to the two acres. Audio to work, but he said he would be willing to develop a trail out to the two acres.
Um, yes, can you guys hear me? Yeah, I sorry, I got a bad connection here. Um, looking at this map, uh, we can definitely accommodate the trails. Uh, you know, clear it out, uh, define by flags by a. And would you suggest us put in some sort of, you know, uh, a surface to walk on? What would you suggest in this situation?
I mean, I still have to figure out whether I think that thousand feet that has to be traversed to get there is. Reasonable or not, but um.
The way that we have it cleared out right now after um. Uh, after clearing the woods, I mean, we have plenty of space and that particular area of the forest is not as dense as the rest of the forest. Uh, so it could be easily, you know, defined by markers or we can put something down. On the ground that will be sufficient for uh for the members for this. Uh, meeting to kind of approve. Um, Terry, Steve, do you have any suggestions what we should put down?
Uh, I mean, you know, you could, you could do a bark mulch trail.
Stone in there. I think it will take away from, uh, you know, the nature of it. I would definitely. You know, put something that is would be a bark mole sounds good. Uh, a uh definitely, uh. You know, wood chippings, that will work. I think that would be a good. You know, an accent to it uh versus, you know, putting a stone or hard pack or definitely not paving. I I don't think anybody would wanna have a pave.
Yeah, I mean, I a couple of things. One is that putting mulch down is not gonna accomplish anything. That'd be gone within. Year or two, um, but I also. I don't really think necessarily. Over a thousand feet, you have a twenty foot wide easement. I I think that's gonna be difficult in and of itself to find the path. Through there depending on how that looks. I'm not, I don't know how that looks, but.
No, that's no. The twenty foot is a, you can, you can maneuver a path through there.
That's ten, I suppose, but it's gonna be, I don't know, I I'm. And then hi, I mean, the other part of it is how do you protect the property of the. The person that you're walking by. Now, it's, I mean, it's sort of a topic that's been on a bunch of people's minds in this town in the last couple of months with all the issues with. Uh, the debate about hunting and whatever else. So I mean, it's. I don't know, um.
Right, that's. You, as an aside, I I realize that your open space law or regulation probably needs to be reworked a little bit. Here we are.
Anything else on the board?
What's the average lot size of the other parcels in the development?
Oh, they're all above the minimum sixty thousand. They're in the seventies, but there's only like two lots that are only sixty thousand square feet. The rest of them are in the seventies. And then there's some that are larger than that.
Yeah, so sorry, are they all two, three acres or roughly?
Well, not all, but there's, there's a couple that are larger and so. And the problem is on the south side where the larger lots are, there's wetlands there. So you're not gonna be able to put a path through the wetland. Uh, and when you start putting in open space, you're deducting from the. Buildable portion of the lot or the lot size, so.
If this one like eleven acres is like outlier, right?
Kind of, yeah, because it's a long, narrow lot. It's just had the way, the way, the way the property boundary is configured that, that's what it does. So we didn't have much choice there.
That lot also could be used as an estate lot with a pasture paddocks if people want to have horses or something like that.
Well, it was.
No, it's less than that. Was it one and a half horses per acre? But I have four and I had three horses.
Anything else from the uh?
I said, of course.
From the board.
I just say. Does the chair have a suggestion on? What might be acceptable for open space if this is not? Going to pass muster?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm not sure the purpose of the eleven acre lot when you could take a bunch of it off. Have a reasonable pathway easement to get there and use that as open space, which could then. You know, it's not like I'm saying that I, you know, that they have to develop trails and do whatever. I think that's for the. Homeowner Association and the residents to figure out what they want to do back there. But having that area where they could do that. That's accessible seems to me like the purpose of the open space component. Um, and this, I don't really see a. Huge downside to the developer from a. From a uh economic or. Uh, uh logistical standpoint of taking off part of that property and putting it in open space to make it more. To cut down on the the distance you have to traverse to get to the open space.
So you're suggesting put all seven point six acres on that lot?
Is that the taste? I.
Seven, seven point six acres.
I mean, I don't. I mean, the other.
The other gun.
You can put, I I mean, I think to make, I think you should take that lot and. I think that is would satisfy the intent and the purpose of having the open space and, but I think it needs to have some. Reasonable access and I'm not sure that a thousand feet walking through the woods by a private. Well, owner's lot and not knowing where the distinction is and. I I think that becomes problematic.
Well, as that lot gets bigger, the distance shortens.
That's what I'm saying is if you took out a bunch of it in the back, then easement to get through is much shorter. And you're dealing with a much more reasonable access. That's probably gonna reduce the lot.
Okay, so.
Are you suggesting maybe doubling what he's got there?
I I don't know what that's going to. No, it's okay, John, I got it ready. Um, I'm not sure what that. You know, I just think that the easement needs to be.
Do we have a dimension in how wide that? Is John.
Your two acres.
Two ten.
Is two ten.
So another two, two ten off of it. So you're only reducing that if you go to four acres. If you do six acres, you're gonna be about six hundred feet. So you're adding, you're reducing by another four hundred because you already have two, so.
This is, this is two ten, so you go another two ten, two ten here and reduce that length by four hundred.
Correct, I mean, but then you're getting down to.
But you still still on lock. But I mean.
Think about family, I mean, depending on how you get creative there, I don't know. But.
Well, it's a. We have the uh the boss on the line and we can say if he wants to put all of that. All that open space there and be done. And I bet he's probably wanting to do that.
I mean, I do, you know, listen, I would. I'm I. I can understand. The rationale for having it just over five acres. Because there's a purpose under the bylaws for doing that and you can get different things on that property. Though that's.
We wanna get this, we wanna get this.
That's a different story.
We wanna get this through, so.
So I mean, I can understand, I can, I can, like, my, my, I think ideally. Having even a shorter easement to get there would be great, but I can understand the purpose of having the five acres and so cutting it down to something where it's just over five acres, which is. Plenty of land for that lot to have offers the benefits of having over five acres. Which may or may not exist in a, in a development like this, but at least they're there potentially. Um, that to me, I think is a reasonable compromise, even if it's not ideally what we would want or I would want for open space, right?
I think I kinda disconnected there.
So he would like you to to be able to keep a five acre lot parcel there to be able to. Have that sellability of a five acre lot, so don't take away so much that you bring it down to.
Okay, so the fourteen acre lot now is down to. And then that covers all of our open space requirement.
I think that is, makes that more usable and. Then in combination, I don't, like I said, I didn't disagree with Terry before is having, you have that wooded area to use and you have those front areas for. For or where you wanna use it. Um, I think. There's gotta be some delineation. At least as an entrance and property lines for that path that gets in there somehow and that, but I, you know, again.
A rough wood fence at the beginning to really kind of show where the pathway entrance is and then. Have you some of your felled logs to. Give a right and a left and here's the pathway to the back and.
I don't know about that. Yeah, I mean, I just.
Something more natural than trying, I mean, this is not the location, I think, for forty five plus boulders to. You know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to find something because I don't, I don't think we need to introduce. New materials into the environment, you know?
No, 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 I and I don't think that's, I think you need to delineate. Once this gets, this lot gets. Cleared and, you know, developed. I think wherever that um entrance is. To get into the wooded area need to be delineated in some manner, right? I think that that path. That twenty foot path needs to be delineated in some way. I think there just needs to be some. You know, I'm not even, they just have to be. Tags or markers or some something in the woods just to kind of keep someone on the right path, right? As they get in there and where you get to that.
You can, you can have other areas that are gonna be up kept as far as as lawn maintenance by a company you have open. That are gonna need to be and they can get to run a a moat down there a couple of times a year on a dirt road and make sure it stays clear.
Cause even with that, even with having a five acre lot, there's gonna be a bunch of undeveloped wooded area. In that private homeowner's lot, right? I mean, they're not clearing the whole five acres, so. You're gonna have to get people through that to that open area.
Can I uh just chime in real quick? I think Val lost us, so he's not part of this conversation. So I guess I I, you know, before making final decisions, I really think he needs to weigh in on this.
Right, and I think, you know, this kind of came to us last night or just today, wasn't it? So I mean, I think it makes sense to. You know, he can list, this is all being taped, so right, he can listen to what the discussion was. You guys can talk to him about it. Um, we can leave it open till the next meeting, close it at the next meeting and and vote on it at the next meeting. Um, so. You know, and if there needs to be further discussion at the next meeting, we can, we can deal with that.
I guess, um, I'm. From the board's perspective, are you feeling that six acres is the minimum you need back there?
I, my, my feeling, and I'm always speaking for myself, is that. I think it needs to be, I think you need to shorten the. The distance you have to traverse to get to that open space and so. I think. I would be willing to say, okay, there are benefits to having a five plus acre lot, so. You know, um, I would go allow for that, but I'm not, it it would need to be about that, right? Um, which is still. Five hundred something feet that has to be. To get there. So I mean, I I I'm not sure I would allow much more than that. So it does sort of equate to cutting off the back six acres of that. But from it, I mean, again, I I maybe I'm wrong and and but I'm not sure there's a huge economic impact of that. I'm not sure that people are. There's a huge economic plus to a eleven acre lot versus a five acre lot, which is not gonna be developed in any way.
There is a spot out back that would be a nice for a house. There it's perked down front and that's probably where somebody might be, but there is a spot out back. That would make a nice, nice.
Maybe that's a unique homeowner, right?
Wouldn't make a flag lot, but they'll put the, you know, the buildable lot in the back half and.
That's a, that's a good question for the boss.
And that's fair too, right? Yeah, that would make it, that would completely eliminate the. Uh, need for an easement and the access section, right? You have that too.
So the next thing is. No, uh, Terry and uh Randy had a. Agreement on their covert issue that they had, so that is resolved between the two of them. They're gonna put natural material down through the cover. So that got resolved. The next thing is. Before this one, there was a continuance and that reminded me that I've gotta send you a request for a continuance for this meeting to the next.
That's right. I I thought I actually slept on bias, Steve, because the storm mark room is dated a little bit different from the original filing. I didn't. Uh, double check my date, so I do need a record.
Uh, on my way home, I go by the office, I'll.
The only question I had uh on on this one would be that, the length of that road and timeline uh for opening up a total travel through. Now, you, I was, I went by it the other day and it's rough cut all up through there, right? All across the back. And you're gonna be starting at the suddenly, suddenly entrance and working your way back normally and coming back out again. And your timeline's about three years. About three years.
I believe that's what he's gonna estimate again.
Is is the rest of that road gonna be in a, you know, the rest of that pathway, it cannot be made so it's partially usable for emergency situations? Cause you could, you're far exceeding the limits of a, of a uh.
Well, the way we.
Dead end road.
Yeah, you're right.
By having that, so it's it's cut in in a rough cut state, so emergency vehicles, if they needed to. Could get in there through there.
So phase one. You have to have the cistern in place. And that means that they wanna have the road up to there with a temporary turnaround. So you're gonna have a cul-de-sac going up to that, up to where the cistern is. And probably just a little beyond so that that could be a turnaround to come out. And then. For phase two is development of a stellar way that sub that one. When he continues on state, um, phase three, he's gonna take from that temporary cul-de-sac and connect back out to more binding. So there. That will happen.
For quite a while, you're gonna be firing way past the eight hundred ba- foot barrier. Of a, of a, of a dead end road, which is, you know, you're gonna have a continuing dead ended road. Until you finally breach the other side, come back out on the more binding.
What kind of drove that is the location of the cistern. So that's, we have.
All that's fine. I'm worried, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about the road. That access in and out. If if you you're in there, three quarters of the way through and something happens back here. There's, there's nothing, nothing, there's no way to get to here, but if you have the opportunity to have something accessible, cause it's already rough cut. Just flatten it out. You can, and just, I'm just curious, can this be done? So if an emergency vehicle needs to get in there, they can.
Terry could answer that.
That's just something I was just curious about.
Well, I mean, currently can drive through with a truck as it, as it stands right now. Um, you know, it's not developed into a formal road. I guess the the concern would be is if you try to fully develop the road system. It's potentially just not gonna be, not gonna have the funds until you sell the house, you know, thousands.
No, just something, something rough cut that that's flat.
Yeah, well, currently he does have a a a, an essentially a loop road that will go through, all the way through. As it stands right now. We have, we have, he can drive all the way through, right? As we speak.
Effectively where that road is gonna be?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't wanna drive through there without permission, so I just went and looked at the ends of the roads. My truck will go through there.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I mean, I also wonder whether this gets dealt with in bonding. To some degree, right? So that you can, um, if it, if it does. Uh, bail in the middle of it, you can, you have the funds available to at least bring the road out. bail in the middle of it, you can, you have the funds available to at least bring the road out and connect it. You know, you don't develop over there at least. So maybe that's another way to secure that.
That's that.
All right, any town officials have any comments on this? Any public comments on this?
You just don't want another noble Steve Road? Is that what you're trying to say nicely?
Any other public comments?
As we say, Steve, you've got a draft uh, decision, let's show some more framework, uh, and some anticipated conditions, including certain time. If, uh, I don't have the chance to, uh, share that with Val, we have to promote well, uh, and I'll do my best to refine based upon the discussion here.
I interrupted just, just ahead of that.
Oh, okay. I wanted to make sure that he went on me.
Do I hear a motion to continue, uh, Oak Ridge Estates to seven fifteen P M on August twentieth?
Dave Spina so moved.
Take a second.
We'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Take a second, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
And you'll get to us that email or get the job.
You'll have that before the meeting.
Uh, type in review, well, for anybody here for that?
I believe so, Allison, uh, Matt and
I just wanted to, if there wasn't gonna be someone here, we could pick that up.
Right back here.
All right. So it's like interview for two twenty, she passed her road. Come on up, sit down. Just, uh, uh, names and addresses for the record, if you wouldn't mind.
Uh, Joseph Rodriguez, two twenty Sheep pasture road.
Laura Rodriguez, twenty Sheep pasture road.
I'm on the call too.
Okay, thank you. Allison, you're kind of, it's, the audio is kind of breaking up a little bit. We can't hear you very well, just so you.
Do you hear me better now?
That is much better.
Um, I'm here from Everlast Energy representing, um, Mr. Rodriguez located at two twenty Sheep Road, or Sheep Hill Road in, um, Southwick. We wanted to ask for a, um, relief on setbacks located at the property. Um, so that we would be able to put in this, uh, ground mount. Uh, the geometrical shape of the property is quite narrow, which makes it a little bit difficult to stay into the hundred and fifty foot setback requirement that the town requires. Um, in chapter one eighty-five dash twenty-three dash two. Additionally, the placement issues that are caused, um, you know, allowing us to actually place the ground mount anywhere. There's trees on the northern section of the property and there's a driveway kind of centered right in the center of the property. Um, so really, there's only that open space right on the southernmost section of the property. The structure of the home is, you know, it's great, but there's not that much roof space available for, to add additional panels onto the back. Um, and so the feasibility of the site is pretty limited to, you know, the roof space that we already have, sorry. Um, the roof space that we already have, and then we're looking to add that additional ground mount, um, you know, further down the southern section. The ground mount itself is, um, not going to be higher than nine feet. It's a relatively low structure. And we are willing to put any kind of, um, visibility barriers such as, um, arborvitae's or any kind of low growing bush to kind of prevent, um, passerbyers from seeing the structure, um, on the roadways, um, the, um, western and southernmost property border.
Okay. Let me just look at this.
I could share the G I S, not really a context.
Yeah.
Compared to the diagram here, that works.
Your property right here. Is that the property line right there?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, just about right there. We still have the stakes up where they marked it when we.
So you're looking to put it right in here.
I believe that's where they said, we haven't really seen the final, this is the first time we're seeing the final actual design of it originally. I thought they told us it was gonna be a little more, oh, more toward back tree lines there.
With the trees there, that's more the open space.
That's the optimal plan. I didn't have seen the newer updated version.
If I compared to the site diagram, um, the freestanding solar component is, well, it starts roughly in line to the center of the building, so and then sends back or easily towards this, this tree line. Um, about twelve feet or so off of this southernly property line, that's seventy-two back. But we squint our eyes and see that it's likely being this general area.
And what is to the south of that?
This is land of the Southwood Housing Authority.
Got it, okay. All right. Okay.
My assumption is that these would have to be angled towards the south. Right? They're not gonna be angled towards the house. So you're not gonna plant anything too close to them, because then you're, you're just gonna shade it, shade it. So, and I would think that we would, if, especially if we're leaving setback, that we would want a definite established barrier of visual.
Even if it's whatever it's eight or nine feet tall, right?
Right.
To your point, Jessica, I'm just going there. So we're looking at, uh, just a, about a foot and a half or so at the toe of this array and then about nine at the backside. I'm not, I'm not sure where it's from. Keep to myself. I would, anybody else wanna know about this?
It's Mike.
Yeah, Dick, go ahead.
Would there be any visibility from the senior housing? So they, would they see this at all?
Not if there was screening on the below it. I mean, there was actually some decent screening on one side of it.
There's gonna be screening on the one side where the main of that, you know, housing authority is because of a tree barrier that's naturally there. It would more be for the visibility on the side of the street.
So the structure itself will not be higher than this tree, is that correct?
No, it's only gonna be about nine feet. I believe it's eight feet, four inches is the top of the height of the ground mount right at the, at the topmost. And then the front section is about anywhere from sixteen to twelve inches off the ground, depending on when we start our leading edge.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anything else from the board?
The concern that the established screening is there to the east. There's nothing to the west, so it can be seen from the road. That's super hugely concerned about that, but I don't know that I think that you can put them there on the edge and not put some sort of visual buffer between the driveway
Yep.
of the adjacent property and this, and considering that the south portion of this solar array is only gonna be three feet tall. I don't know the geometry to say how, how far back the two and a half feet would have to be from a nine foot tall arborvitae in order to protect from the visual. And then at that point, our I don't think we're looking at a setback issue anymore. Now we're looking at it maybe closer to your driveway, so that's I don't wanna say no, but I don't know that this positioning is gonna work. With those things in there. Does that make sense to you guys? Yeah, yeah.
Is there room on the other side? On the northern side of the property of the house?
It gets really shaded back there.
Okay, yeah, the tree.
I mean, when they first came out, we didn't know that that's where they were thinking about doing it was along that line. We thought it was gonna be back towards the house.
Or those trees that you can see, not those trees like down like in that corner lot, there's like two big trees, we thought they were gonna run more closer to that.
Where the driveway juts out at the end.
Put it on the roof.
Well, they, they are utilizing.
It's an older house, so it draws a little bit more power with everything else we've had and.
I mean, the only thing I could think of, right, is that if you if the northern part of it is out, it's too shaded, right? Cause that would resolve the issue because you could put screening to the north of them and the southern part of the face of your house and you don't need to screen that, right? That's your house. If you put it up, really up toward that driveway, you could probably screen it to the west and then to the south enough of a distance away that you're not impacting the actual panels, but it would have to be up by that driveway, I think.
Well, that's where we thought initially they were going to do that. This was our first time seeing that they were putting it against them. The property line.
I think usually they try to help you guys out by pushing it this far away and giving you as much, but yeah, I think in this case, because you're working on such a narrow piece and you have these butters that we really have to keep in mind, might need to reconfigure if possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just think, and I think it might be doable. But it's just, you gotta figure out how to screen it from the south when that's gonna be the lowest area of the panels, the lowest height of the panels, right? So I don't think any of us, it sounds like, but I that's, I want to speak for everybody, but it doesn't sound like anybody has a problem with the idea of it. It's just protecting that property to the south and making sure that they have the ability to, um, to, you know, not see that when they're going up the driveway there to
Right.
To that.
Maybe we have to reconfigure.
Right, I mean, I, and to the west of it, you could put easily screening that basically runs from the driveway alongside those solar panels and pretty well screen those, so that the only view would be if someone is really
The side.
Right down that driveway, maybe they can, but that's not. Yeah.
Well, that's what I wonder, cause a lot of times they take walks down the sidewalk on that driveway, so at the same time, it's, it's still in sight. But they're walking down that walkway. A lot of times they take that walk from the back all the way up to the front and then back down.
Well, I mean, that's what I think. I, you gotta block that, right? I mean, you gotta basically run arborvitae or what have you on that southernly border of your property there. And then the question comes, can you put, can you cite them in a place where that screening at, on the southernly border of your property is not gonna impact, shade the solar panels, right?
It's gonna be hard to do, um, with the shading on the, on that bottom most. If we get permission from the Southwick, um, Housing Authority that they'll allow us to plant arborvitae's on their property, is that something that you guys will consider? Because then we'll be far enough away from the actual array to where it won't, um, you know, kill the production on the ground mount.
I mean.
I mean, i- if it's something that they're okay with us doing, do we have to have a letter or?
Yeah, it would have to be tied to it. I mean, here's the issue, right? And it depends a little bit on what they say, but you are you may very well be willing to take on the expense of putting it in. But then the maintenance and if there's anything that goes wrong with it, right, you're sort of, it's on their property and not on your property, right? So there's gotta be.
You know, no, 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 I'm just thinking about the homeowners, like the benefits, like, I mean, part of their tree is on the homeowner's property, so I was thinking, you know, if the homeowner's gotta help out here and there with picking up, you know, any branches that fall during a major storm, seeing their trees on their property, maybe they would be okay with arborvitae's being on their property type deal.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, uh, what I would need to figure out, and maybe this sort of becomes part of the agreement that you have with the Southwick Housing Authority is that this needs to be screened, right? And so someone has to have responsibility for maintaining the screening so that you don't just let the screening go and it's gone. And since it was on their property, you don't do anything with it, right? So there has to be some responsibility there that you would otherwise have if it was on your property with the screening, right? So that's the only issue and that may very well be something that can come out of an agreement with the Southwick Housing Authority and it's documented enough that that concern goes away. Um, but that's the, that's the one issue that I see.
They, would this housing authority be able to do something like that?
Say that again?
Would the housing authority have the avail, the ability to, to make that kind of a deal?
I don't see why not. It's not, I mean, if I was them, as long as they're not incurring expense, that's not the worst thing. I mean, they get some nice, you know, privacy screening right there, that they may, that may be a benefit to that, to that property. So I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to it, it's.
Yeah, hurt to ask.
Yeah.
Works with other, uh, local A H J's and they've allowed us to do something in this similar fashion where we take on the expense of having them planted and they'll maintain it, um, to provide both the visibility barrier and, um, you know, just maintaining it as it goes. So if it's something that we can work out with them on the homeowner's behalf, um, what would you guys need as far as documentation to be able to, to push us along? Do you need a letter? Do you wanna notarize? Like, how exactly would you like this?
I think it just, it needs to be, I think a letter is probably fine, but I think what it needs to do is allow for it has to give authority for in this case, it would be the building inspector, if there was an issue with the lack of screening and they needed to enforce something that they could go to someone and enforce that, right? That's what, that's the issue. Is it has to make that, that requirement for screening has to be enforceable, and if it's not gonna be on the the property owner's property, we have to deal with that. So um, cause otherwise it gets put up, it gets knocked down in a storm and then you have no remedy whatsoever to the screening issue, right? So um, that's the issue. I don't care if it's in a letter personally, but, um, it just, that's what needs to be addressed.
Well, go find out, let, come back, let us know.
Mike?
Yeah, Dick.
Wouldn't they also need a whole harmless for the town to have a whole harmless clause there?
No, I just, I don't. They just, the, the town just needs someone to enforce it against, right? They, the town has an obligate that bylaws require screening. If the trees were planted on their property and then they were taken away, the building inspector could go to them and say, you need to plant trees right here, here, right? But pursuant to the bylaw and the, and what you were granted by the planning board. If it's not on their property, that enforcement goes away. And so there has to be that tie between being able to enforce that screening department. That's the only, I think that's all that's needed. Um, so that's sort of up to you folks to sort of talk to them and figure out some agreement, but that's gotta be the sort of a key part of the agreement. Okay?
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. Uh, anything else?
Um, I think that's it. Thank you guys so much for your time this evening.
We'll carry this forward to August twentieth. Coordinate through uh, Allison and her team. Uh, if, if uh, things are ready to move forward at the time, I'll put on the agenda of the discussion.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Cause it's not a permit. Did we do a permit for a lot?
Those have been there as long as I've been.
I think those were before permits and I mean, that, that there's nothing. I'm just looking at um. And Diana have a comment? I, I just, I, it's not something that we had any control over. Um, as far as the lack of screening there.
But also I, I'm not gonna hold this homeowner to a standard where I'm gonna ask for another rule of our varieties across the street line when across the street is. Where that, right? So you didn't see that.
Do you know, not to the. Yeah, I don't know. I gotta think about that. I mean, I, I'm much. I just get that, but I mean, they didn't do anything wrong across the street. They did, they, there was no bylaw. So, I don't know. Well, we'll think about that, but that's it. All right, uh, Depot Square. Discussion about the request to release the performance security.
Good evening. I think it's part of your package. You have a copy, I, I will. Good evening. For the record, my name is Rich Seifek and I'm an attorney at uh, with offices at sixty Court Street in Westfield. And I'm the attorney this evening on behalf of Tim Lucier and twenty Depot Square LLC. And we're here as, as you indicated, on the agenda to rec, uh, request the release of the, the bond. That's, that's been sitting out there for. However, long fourteen years, maybe. I don't know how long it's been out there, but.
It is like it.
Yeah, well, it is at least fourteen years. But with me this evening, as you know, is Philippe Cravo from our Leveque Associates. Rob. Has been intimately involved in this project from, from day one, uh, but he couldn't be here tonight due to a conflict and. Unfortunately, my client couldn't be here tonight due to a death in the family last night. So he's, he's, he's not here either. So I'm, I'm here on behalf of everybody, I guess. Um, so I, I, I have extra copies of the MOU. I think you might have them in your package. If not, I brought copies for everybody. You got a copy? So, um, I'm glad, I'm here tonight to gladly announce that after several months of negotiations with the trustees of the Depot Square Condominium Trust. One of which is in the room here tonight, uh, Mr. Mike Parent, everyone knows. Uh, we've agreed. Um, to a formal MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding, which you have in front of you with regard to this project. Um, Rob has been working with the Mr. Lucier on this project for over fourteen years. And he asked me to get involved last year on behalf of Mr. Lucier to facilitate negotiations. With the Depot Square Condominium Trust, Atrium Properties, the Town of Southwick. And Mr. Lucier. So I, I more or less got involved, not so much as representation of just Mr. Lucier alone, but trying to facilitate some sort of mediation. Um, between all the parties to uh, to get a global agreement together. And that's what we did. Um, we started um, last November. Um, I then spoke with Randy um, Brown from the DPW and Mr. John Goddard. All along to discuss the issues that were outstanding. And uh, the goal was basically to fix what is known as basin number five. And so. Uh, I just asked Philippe just to turn to that one page. Basin number five has been the, the biggest bone of contention because it has been. Installed originally, representations that it's failed. Um, and Mr. Lucier now is willing to redo it completely. Um, and that's what's been holding everything up. There were also issues relative to trees. Plantings that had failed over the last dozen years or so. And the condominium board had concerns about. Compensation for failed trees and all that. So, um. Uh, we, we come to a, to a settlement per se. And the way I, I propose it to work is that we would ask for your blessing tonight. Number one on the MOU, just, just a, a generic uh, blessing relative uh, uh, as part and parcel of your motion to release the uh. A letter of credit bond that has currently uh, been issued by Westfield Bank. And the amount of that bond is a hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars. Um, if you release that bond. Um, that'll allow Mr. Lucier to um, obtain his own personal funds. Because as you probably are aware, his personal funds secure this letter of credit bond. And once we free up some of his money. The first thing that we will do immediately, um, upon approval is pay twenty-five thousand dollars directly to the condo board. Uh, and, and as a resolution for all the claims and disputes relative to the tree and any future tree planting. So they're gonna take our money. And they're gonna plant anything that they want, anywhere that they want, so to speak. Um, number two, and the biggest component of this agreement. Is that um, my client's gonna redo catch basin number five to the satisfaction of the town. Um, he's ready, willing and able to go as soon as uh, this gets all signed up and ready to move. Um, they, and, and as a further um, suggestion that I had made at the meeting. And which we all agreed to is that he would put an additional twenty thousand dollars as a backup bond, so to speak, in my office. Um, in my uh, trustee account as a backup bond that says if he does the catch basin. And it's not to the satisfaction of the town, then I've got funds um, to be to use to, to do whatever the town wants. And I will not release. Um, any of the funds until I get final approval from Mr. Goddard in this board. That they're completely satisfied that that catch basin five is built to exact state performance standards. Rob is very confident it can be done pretty easily. And once that's done, there's one other small little. Um, thing that he agreed to do is to fix a manhole cover in front of unit number nine by raising of the manhole cover. That'll be a very simple, simple matter. And that's, that's it. And that'll resolve all the claims um, amongst all the parties. Um, it'll get the catch basin up, operating again. And it'll close out um, this long and storied chapter of Depot Square condominiums. So that's it. We're just looking for your motion to allow the release of that bond at Westfield Bank. And uh, we'll hit the ground running and, and hopefully come back to you as soon as it's done this summer um. And, and have inspectors out by the DPW and Mr. Goddard and say, it looks great. And uh, we're done.
Randy? He's on to him.
Yes, uh, so I spoke with Randy, uh, rather, I should say, Randy and I uh. Participated in the call, I think it was with Rob at the time. Regarding this proposal. And in general. We're on board with the folks. The idea is to reduce the, we'll call it the bond, essentially down from a hundred seventy-three down to twenty. Um, and we're. First, your understanding is that the function of that basin can be restored with a relatively limited amount of work. Is that a reasonable statement, Philippe?
Yeah.
Um, you know, uh, despite the fact that. There had been, let's say, at least one prior attempt uh, to do so, whether it be uh, maintenance or installation related. It's, it's not a large uh, swell item, although it was obviously significant. Uh, to the condominium owners association and the developer uh, to have some sort of understanding um, that's laid out here. I feel it's necessary, at least for the board and for Philippe and. Developer, at least raise the description, or at least observe that um. A phased project like this one that was initiated. Uh, took a number of years across a number of contractors. And as a private project, we were limited. Uh, to no oversight or observation uh, from the town. Uh, one of the requests BPW in prior exchanges has been for, I'm gonna call it a. Uh, pardon the formality of the term, Philippe, but I'm gonna use, we'll call it a certificate of performance. Uh, the response to that uh, in essentially certifying the stormwater system is functioning as it was designed. Before I go any further, I'll say fully with the satisfaction of basin five, is that obtainable or is? That's um, we'll call it a hanging issue. Um, you know, that's uh. You know, that's something we run into with all these, you know, developments that obviously there's a. You know, cer- certificate from someone, you know. The engineer. In this case, you know, it was an RLA project that designed pre. Dated my time there, so it would take a, you know, um, an analysis on, on my end if I was going to certify anything. But I don't think that it's. I don't think it's an impossible task. I think it's just something that, you know, we'd have to kind of um. It's taking a little bit of work to get there, just because, you know, my involvement on this one in particular. From the engineering standpoint and the, the design's standpoint and. Like you said, construction oversight standpoint, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Wasn't there. So for me to say, yes, you know, you know, sign off on it, you know, here you go. So that's fine. I only wanted to make sure, in case you, in case we really jump off the clip earlier, I didn't wanna speak any further. But to Philippe's point, um, I recognize that the, we, to ask individually uh, from them is. Uh, it's too great. There was not, although there are, we'll call them developers' records somewhere. Um, there wasn't engineering observation, so anything Philippe can look back to another professional and rely on. Okay, the basin was. Structed uh, properly, uh, the materials brought in, the, the drainage network, it's, that's a challenge. What I'm saying is that that remains outstanding and I. Would presume that unless the floor is inclined, uh, otherwise, as far as. Believe that this team can get with a, we'll, we'll start the discussion, a cursory review of the project is a limited certification.
I mean, I was, tell me if I'm wrong. But this thing is so old that I'm assuming that to some degree, the passage of time. It helps suggest that things were done in a proper manner, other than obviously.
That's the point I was gonna make is that we got fourteen, fifteen years of performance. Other than this one. Basin that needs to kind of be dredged out, I think the rest of it, the functionality is pretty decent.
So at least you have that. I mean, that's not the exact same thing, but at least it ha- has some. Some backup to the idea. Yeah. Okay, uh, do you, is there a copy of the bond here?
Never seen it. Westfield Bank. I have been in communication with Westfield Bank. There is a, here is a point of contact. They keep asking, did you get a release yet? Cause I, I notified them. From the beginning, when, when Mr. Lucier told me who it was, the, and they just keep saying. Let us know when the, the board has signed off on it so they can release it. So I haven't seen it, but they confirmed the amount. And when I had a conversation with that, a hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Gonna be my next question.
Yeah, I mean, if.
Uh, I, I honestly don't recall. We, we had this exchange a, a short while back, but I, I.
Have to, I mean, obviously he's gonna have to look at it. The one thing that jumps out to me is I'm not sure that. And this is more minor, but I'm not sure Southwick Planning Board is the right party to have it here. Maybe it's the town of Southwick that. Is the appropriate party. That's why I sort of asked for the bond, right? To see who the named party.
Yeah, I thought my understanding was, was the planning board that requested the bond. And that was again, representation to me.
Yeah, we may have, it may have been requested by the board. It doesn't necessarily get. Documented as the board, as the party, right? Um, it's, it's more for the towns. But I, I, again, that's.
And that's why I didn't put them on, no, and I didn't put the town in as a signatory to the agreement, because I didn't think it was necessary. Permission to release it, that's all.
So I mean, I think that, that, I think we need. Mark Beglane or, or someone over there, whatever it's been, to just review this and be comfortable with the language that's in here. Um.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and it, it could, you know, especially looking at the bond too, right? To make sure that there's a, there's not a disconnect in anything.
I'll be happy to uh, to take that responsibility.
Okay.
Um, because I know, um, I've spoken to Ben and Mark on a hundred projects and I know him very, very well. And I can maybe get a copy from the bank, a copy of that, shoot that with a copy of this agreement over, get a letter. Confirming everything is copasthetic and send over to John.
Um, and I mean, if I'm looking at this and understanding it correctly. The twenty-five thousand is solely being.
Given.
Given to the um.
Found awards for their tree plantings that they wanna do.
Yep, and then. The twenty thousand dollars is being held.
By me.
By you.
Trustee account.
Seems like it's for, it says Southwick Planning Board and. That the um, Depot Square. Um. Condominium Trust.
Yep.
Are both being.
Yeah, because they, obviously, they, yeah, they, they would be beneficiaries theoretically if, if more work needed to be done than uh.
Meaning that, but do they? I mean, I guess my only question is, how does that logistically function, right?
Well, I would think it's, there's a default. I just kind of move it down the road. They do the work. Council says no, don't like it. Do it again. Somebody's gotta pay somebody. So the beneficiary is obviously the condo board because it's their land. Um, but the payee is not gonna be the town unless the town hires something independently. I would come back to this board and say, if there was a default. That the performance wasn't done, then how do we fix the default? If it's obviously gonna, gonna be Mr. Lucier, Mr. Lucier is represented to me, at least in, at the meeting, he's gonna be a hundred percent responsible for all the work. He's just putting the money aside as additional performance, but even if we came back and said, no, go back out and do more work. He would continue to do that until he meets that standard. The only time that I would theoretically use the twenty grand is if he stopped working. If he just didn't show up and didn't do what he was supposed to do, then we gotta get someone to do the work. And that was the thought process of that.
We're holding that same leverage, holding on to the one seventy-three, right?
Yeah, no kidding.
So the money's gonna, you, you want us to release the hundred seventy-three.
Correct.
Back to him and then take his word that he's gonna dole it out to everybody who's supposed to get their.
He doesn't, he, he, he doesn't get the money until the, until the bond is released. His money is collateral for the bond. So he doesn't get his collateral back until you release the bond. So he doesn't have the money now. Uh, per se, because it's tied up in the bond, cause he's paying for the, for that bond, on an annual, and has been for the last fifteen years. He doesn't have access to his own money and he's continued to pay for the bond. And the only issue left is this one catch basin. So. The thought process is we can be done with the hundred seventy-three thousand dollar bonds for the whole project and just hold twenty grand plus his, his work.
We won't holding anything.
No.
So we just totally lose our leverage. And what about a bond reduction? And, and, and we hold on to, to, to. The amount of monies that need to be covered.
Back at ground one, because then I've already got the signatures of, of.
Just, I'm not saying something bad could happen, but if something bad happens. And now we have zero leverage in order to get this accomplished.
Oh, you got twenty grand.
We've run into this a couple of times.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I, I would suggest the twenty thousand dollars that is being held in my office would be sufficient enough for any.
That's not our office. We can't take care of it ourselves.
Then that makes you part of the agreement. We start all over again.
Just to, my, my, my train of thought with things that have gone on, that we need to make sure that we're, that we're, that we're covered.
That's, that's, that's why I put the language in there is to, to this board's and the town's satisfaction. That's the leverage that you have. You say you're not satisfied, then you gotta keep coming back until you're satisfied.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I, but this is, I mean. As an attorney, I don't really have an issue with them holding it in escrow, but that's my own, of course, all.
Mike, there was a question in the back of the room.
Yeah, but. Go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, I'm saying, there was a gentleman with a question in the back of the room.
Both Randy Brown and Rob have said it could take up to six months. To see after all the work is done, you have to go through some seasons to see if it keeps draining. So it could take up to six months for them to really sign on and say, yeah, it's working. So it wouldn't be just do work. And yep, sign, seal, delivery. It really would take, and I think uh, Mr. Goddard also. Mentioned that they would have to go out and take measurements after storms to see how quickly it was um, draining. So.
I mean. Here's the way I think of it. My personal view is. There's two up, I mean. The town still has an obligation to make sure that this is done correctly. Um. Though there's, you know, a large part of it now is on the, the homeowners uh, association and, and taking on. What they feel is acceptable with an agreement here. So I, I. Um, as long as. Randy is comfortable having evaluated this and is comfortable with the twenty thousand being held and be aware, um. And the structure of it is okay with town council. And the homeowner association is okay with it, cause ultimately, right? If, if there's an issue with this and the twenty thousand is not enough to cover it. It's on the homeowner association to figure that out. Right, so. Um, uh, you know, that's. I think I would be okay with that under that. Um, uh, you know, that's, I think I would be okay with that under that structure and with, with. The risk being taken on by. Um, the homeowner, whatever amount of risk that is, it may very well be little risk, right? The twenty may be perfectly enough to cover this and. Everybody thinks it's gonna be done pretty easily and.
We, we, we discussed it at great length in my office relative to numbers and negotiated and. Mr. Lucier thinks that twenty is way more than would ever be necessary, even if he did a terrible job. Um, so that's why we came up with that number and the condo association agreed to it. Um, we did and. So Randy's okay with it and my conversations with him, so that's why I drafted it.
Yeah, so I mean, I think if we could just run this up to the chain and make sure everybody gets a sign off from Mark and. Yeah, I guess it'll from Randy, and I'm just, it's not always in the file. Um, and the structure of it is okay, um, and this is being signed.
It's already been signed by the condo board. It just hasn't been signed by Mr. Lucier because. He has to pay before he signs, so can't sign to his cart before the horse.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, I, I, I think he. Well, I leave it up to you, um, whether it changes need to be made for Mark Beglane. Um, but that's up to you. It's not our issue, so. Um, so, okay, all right, um. So. Yeah, I mean, I, I suppose we could probably take a vote on it, right? Some to the conditions. But I, you tell me whether you want this or wait till the.
I'd rather. Like just pushes it out. I was hoping that we'd have the project done in another month, but that just pushes it out. Into the season to do the work, but that's okay. I mean, it's, it's your board. We're just anxious to get, Mr. Lucier's anxious to get in the ground like tomorrow if he can. Um, get this thing started. It's prime time, but kicking it out another month is just kicking it out another month. Yeah, that's, yeah, well, yeah, why, why stop now?
Yeah, I mean, I, if the board's not comfortable with it, then they're not comfortable, so we're here to wait until. Yeah, well, that's. Um, is what it is, so. Um, I, I can't imagine in the next month we can't get the I's dotted and the T's crossed, get the opinions of.
Yes, yeah, just Begline and we already got Randy, so just Begline.
Yeah, um, and, um, and then, you know, we can vote on it and get that released at the, at the twenty.
August twentieth?
Yep.
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Nope, we're on the goal line, as they say.
You are.
Yeah, not the goal line, maybe the goal line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Jeff. Good seeing you, buddy.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, so. There's uh, the Hudson, why don't we deal with the Hudson Drive? We have someone on there, right, for that? And the others. We don't need to do upgrades tonight. I remember that goes on. Who's, uh, do I see Mr. Cannavon? Is that who's on for? The uh, Hudson Drive Solar?
Yes, this is uh, Brendan Cannavon.
Okay, um. Perfect. So let, uh, Mr. Goddard just needs to pull up the documents here and then we'll. Pop into this, give us one minute.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so. I've given the board a couple of uh, updates over the past few months. Groundwork and some limited construction has begun. And has been completed over at the Hudson Drive uh, solar facility. Um, as that process began and the building permit uh, was submitted. It gets right up past my desk, so I look at the uh, conditions of the decision, uh, requirements of the bylaw moving forward. So one of the pieces is that the um, decommission plan and bond be in place and approved prior to. Proposition to the full building permit. Uh, the reason I bring that history is that this has been batted around a number of times between town council. And, and the, and Matt Asun and, and their, uh, their consultants as well. Both to develop, if you will, this document here, which outlines uh, workup tasks and costs associated with them. As well as we call it the escalation component um, of this particular project. Um, one of the, we'll say notable clarifications working through the process was this, this project doesn't include, does include. That energy storage system, to making sure that that um, element, you see, I, I remember ten right there. And the cost associated with it, um, included was, so we call it just significant uh, point of discussion verification. The rest of uh, I'm involved in meat and potatoes over the past few months, and I believe. Agree has been just some pushes and pull between town council. Um, and have us on regarding the formality of the uh, the bond. Content itself. So this being, if you will, the exhibit, um, that's referenced therein. So to that point, there's a, an item in our bylaw that requires the planning board to approve. The amount of the bond, which may be between one hundred percent, uh, that being the numbers that you see here and a hundred and twenty-five percent. Um, I do have review from Randy, uh, that he is satisfied with the figures provided here. And this was produced by a consultant, I think it said at the top it was, oh, I lost track of it. But nonetheless, um, consultant to Navasun.
Okay, so he's, he's comfortable with the hundred percent.
That's correct. So I'm sorry, there was a lot of talk. We're just looking for a motion, uh, presuming the planning board. Is in agreement, Randy's assessment, um, that the number is satisfactory. At that point in time, Navasun's gonna go back, uh, and issue the former doc, formal documents, um, to be submitted to the town clerk for the bonding.
Okay. I would probably have to look at the decisions to know the exact language, but it's basically gonna be in motion to. Approve except the, the, um, the surety.
Yeah, I mean, if I can pull up the decision here, but, you know, I, or I could read it off, but it, yeah, essentially what you just said is corrected. You know, it needs to be approved before um, the buil, the building permits issued, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to look in the file and see if there is specific language or anything, but I'm assuming it's deriving from the actual. Permit itself, but that's fine. I'm, so we can, this language is. Yeah, um, all right, any, um, any questions, comments from the board members?
We know who looked at the escalation.
Or no one, I mean, it's.
Well, it's one of those.
At least town council.
Okay.
Oh, for sure.
Why, what is?
It's two and a half percent. That feels a little light to me, but, you know. If I did the math right, which in my head, I might not.
No, it is two and a half percent. Yep.
I don't know. Who we typically consult on such things?
Yeah, I mean, I don't even. John, can you just pull that back down a little bit so I can see the. All right, I mean, do you have thoughts on that?
Uh, you know, I mean, I think I've heard that the feds targeting three percent going forward. I don't know, that.
Yeah, so that would. Any other board members have any thoughts on that? Just trying to see what it is. So what's the number that the, that the bond is for?
Year one, three hundred and fifty-seven.
Man, I'll leave it, um. I'm gonna leave it up to you, whether you wanna make a motion to put that three percent forward or you wanna leave it as it is.
Lot of pressure.
I, no, I, I actually think that going forward.
It is a Starbucks coffee.
It is a Starbucks coffee. Just based on, like I said, I, I don't think two and a half percent. Uh, actually, I know.
All right, and that's the only place it pops into play, correct? It's not, you know, it's not about.
Assets borrowing somebody, you know, a finance committee or something like that, saying, oh, no, we're cool. They're not here, so.
No, that's the finance committee. Their, their overview and, and knowledge of this either. I mean, I, so, but I don't know, maybe, um, it's on agreement. Um, but it is really. That approach. It's, it's, it's balancing risk, right? Um, so. Um, okay, um. So we will do that by motion. And just the numbers would change on the. On that part of it. And that's, that's simply, you, that's an attachment, is that right, to the actual? Sure, there's a, there's a. Between town council and that was something they worked out the language of the surety bond.
That's right, so this is an exhibit.
And this is an exhibit to that, it won't affect the actual surety bond, that's just the legal language and it's referring to the exhibit that has the details of the money.
That's true.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just to jump in for two seconds here, for, for what it's worth, there are different ways to handle the inflation. You know, you can reassess the decom each year, cause you know, inflation's not necessarily tied to labor rates to remove this stuff. So it is kind of decoupled in that way. Two and a half, you know, just a number that we've used in the past and decided to throw it in here. You know, if you wanna make it three, that's fine. I mean, but the idea is. Each year, the surety is gonna reassess this and increase or, you know, adjust the value of the bond. We, we laid out this table just to show you, you know, per the approval that we had in place, how we would potentially adjust it for inflation. You know, in some cases, labor rates may come down, the bond may actually be less, but we wanted to lay out kind of what a standard schedule would look like. But, you know, it's up to you guys. If you want, we can add language that says, hey, we'll reassess it each year. We could say, hey, this is an example. Um, we're, we're trying to be whatever, we, you know, honestly, just do whatever is easiest for you guys. It's, it's small dollars in the grand scheme of things for us.
Just pull up that bond. I, I mean, how is it, I guess, how is it referred to in the bond?
That's the first, I believe.
Okay. I mean, the bond, is there anything in here that ties the bond amount to? That escalate, escalating number? Or allows for yearly evaluation?
Well, I guess that's what I was asking is, we could add the idea that there's a annual evaluation to assess that. Or we can just say annually it will be increased at that two and a half percent rate. I think that's what we were sort of looking for some guidance on from, from you guys as to what you want us to do.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it, and, and I'm just looking at this very quickly, um. But it seems like this is a bond for three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and it doesn't change. And there is no clause which allows it to change. Unless I'm missing something. I mean, the only reference to exhibit B is in a whereas clause, and that means absolutely nothing. So, I mean, that exhibit really doesn't have a heck of a lot of. Legal weight in here, unless I'm missing another reference to it, but I'm not seeing any. So this is simply a bond for two hundred and fifty-seven, seven thousand, there was, there was no escalation. I mean. I guess in my head. The way I think it may be appropriate to structure it. Having. No experience with these whatsoever, admittedly, but just from a common sense standpoint would be to have a sort of default escalation. But, you know, it, it could be a yearly evaluation, so it may go higher or lower. But at least there's a default in there that, that some, that it escalates, like an absolute, absolute change, right? Um, so that you're not stuck in it, at the year one number. For, for twenty-five years. I just, I think there has to be a. At a minimum, but if not agreed upon number that is concrete, then at least a default where. If it's not, if it's not reassessed, either up or down. Um, and that would be not just the surety, that would be the town. Who's part of that reassessment. It's not, it's not, we're not putting it in the hands of the surety to determine what that number is gonna be on a yearly basis. Uh, so Brendan, what, I mean, what is, is that? Is that the idea of what you were looking for as to what we were thinking on that in those regard?
Exactly, yeah, I mean, we, we can add either, you know, reassessed annually. Or reassess the plan annually. I mean, ultimately. I guess to your point, we are the ones that come up with. The amount, you know, the three hundred and fifty seven is kind of the starting rate. The only adjustment beyond that is. Adjustment based on labor rates, so. The easiest thing to do, to be totally honest, would be just to take this form and say. Inflation to be tied to a CPI target or something, so that it's a publicly available thing that everyone can see and it's not debatable. That's probably the easiest thing. If you plug in three percent and then say, you know, to be adjusted with the town's guidance or something, it, it makes it, I think, a little muddier. The, the easiest way to do it is just tie it to something that is not debatable.
Question becomes what that is.
What the, what the index is, yeah, there's lots of different ones.
All right, yes.
Or we just pick three percent. And again, honestly, like, we. We are just trying to do whatever is the easiest, honestly, at this point, it's.
I under, no, I understand, and it's not. Listen, I mean, I think a lot of this for us has been over the last handful of years. This has been an issue in town with these bonds, not for solar necessarily, but just bonds in general and how we're making sure we're not stuck at the end of the day, right? And so it's just something I think more at the forefront of our minds. That it is necessarily with, with you for this particular project. Well, what I would say is. I don't mind tying it to something.
I, I'm all, I'm all in favor, actually, tying it to an index. I think that's probably the ideal situation, it's just. Yeah, and it wouldn't surprise me if there's an index for decommissioning solars. Yes, or something like that, they're. Um, what kind of.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that that makes the most sense, so why don't we? Uh, if the board is okay with that, that would be, maybe we can work with. Figuring out what to tie it to, right? That would be the last sort of. Determination to make, but. Um, and I don't even mind designating. Someone to figure that out, right? That's more of a detail that doesn't. I'm sure the board needs to vote on it, that could be figured out by. Or it's you would. Um, I thought it's good to jump into it. Yeah, so, I mean, I would say, why don't we, um, why don't we move to, um. Now, do I hear a motion to? Uh, approve the, the surety bond. With the addition of, um, a, a. Escalation clause tied to an index to be determined by. You know. Between Mr. Spena and. And that's. Annual, yeah, yeah.
Or just we pick an index, and that's the thing that then, because that index will run, run.
Well, they're gonna have to renew the bond.
They have to.
Bond, yes, so the bond would just be tied to. When they, when they renew it.
Yes.
It would get determined through the.
Right, right, right.
Uh, and, and however we need to phrase that, but I mean, that's, that's the idea, is that right? Is that? By saying that right, Brendan, in the airline too?
Exactly, that's exactly right. We just need to add the language that says, you know, the amount will be increased annually, and it will be tied to whatever CPI index we determine makes the most sense, and. I just Googled, you know, solar renewable energy bond CPI index, and there's a bunch of stuff that popped up, so I'm sure we can agree on whatever that index is.
Yeah, and you guys can figure that out. I think that's appropriate to sort of designate that to get, figure that out. All right. Uh, I'm not saying that again. Do I hear that motion that still moved? All right, do I hear a second?
Second, Dick Ottinger's second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael's already aye. Dave's been aye.
Dick Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. Um, so I'll have, um. Either Mr. Spena or Mr. Goddard will get in touch with you to sort of figure that out, um, and. We'll get that language in there and. You know, you got, obviously, I think it needs to just be signed off on by Tom Council with the new language, right? But that'll be easy enough to do. Well, that's, that's a bold, but that should be easy enough to do, that's a. It's a pretty straightforward.
From this point, theoretically.
It's a pretty straightforward escalation clause, right? So, um, I think that should be pretty easy to get. Know it.
That'd be ideal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, that's what you get for all.
I know, exactly. Ask the questions.
I could extend the time plan's report into a later portion of the meeting, I suppose.
Well, planning board member and staff comment.
Yeah, that's, that's my. That's right there.
To reestablish the streak.
All right. Uh, seven seventy one. First one. Yeah.
Yeah, you want to pull it out in section.
Again, choosing. Hey, Mike, does it switch on?
At a light.
And I go the other way.
Charging too many cars right now, you're running out of power.
Yep.
We're down to John, can you check the tranny?
Okay. Went back up. Yes. So this document. Starts roughly the same. Just makes generic reference to. Projects. Proceedings. We can. Insert certain findings from previous discussion. Or we can dive right into. Specific aspects.
Keep, wait, keep going on this. Do you, you put in the actual. Arterial link?
The one eight five nine eight zero. No, as a matter of fact, I decided to. We can grab what I have.
What you've had done with the other document. I think you have to do it, right? Because you have to make the findings.
Want to make sure we're done.
Um. I mean, I would say. And board members tell me what you. Want to do with this, but I think you almost have to. Have the. That basically say the, the members voting in favor of it. Found this and. The ones who didn't found this, right? I mean, I think that's how you have to do it. But our typical structure is, is. Planning board has considered this criteria, it makes the following findings, right? But when you have a split with board. That's not. The structure that you've been having. Right, and so. How do you then document? And it's easily simple, because at least in my mind, the only two that. Are. Not met are the first two, right? So it's one and two, the rest of them are fine. I don't, I don't have any discretion on three through seventeen, so. It's not like it's a big. Huge deal. But we just got to figure out how logistically to reflect.
One A, two of the members found this, three of them found that would be. Two A, two of them found this.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you do that, maybe you, maybe you have. One. A. And you have those voting in favor, and then you have one B, those voting against. I mean, it's just gonna have the word not in it, right? And that, but I mean. I do have a, I do, you'll see on here, I do have a sort of.
We're getting it down in general, Michael's.
All right.
So. This is what.
This will make it for Christmas.
Certain active.
Is this the basically decision from the last time that we went to and voted on?
Yes.
All right. So I would say. Um, on one. Here, I just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, 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 hey.
Uh, would you, can we just do like. So. And then, but, um.
So, but this is Microsoft Fire.
Yeah, I'm not really. That's not going to hear, but all that's okay.
Um, it's okay. Tell me and.
Doing it, it's like it's an iPad, yeah, so I mean, but that's what I wanted to, like, one A. You have that, like, the option, and then below it, you have.
What they feel.
Right, and then you have one B. Um, and. You just take out the word not, right? I mean.
Yeah, I just have the word.
Where you identify which ones are which, and then you do that for one and two.
And to be. Fair, the board members voting in favor, we're talking about this specific document. That we're working with here, which goes through. The explanation. In favor or not in favor. I just want to make sure I structure that part.
That's fair, I mean, it's. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Does that make sense? It's a good, you know. Analytical exercise for. Have a split vote again.
Yeah.
First one in. Ten headers.
So as I. Yeah.
Now, I think.
That might have to fix since number two. Little second half.
Does that make sense like that? No, 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 I mean. I think it's a word generally.
General structure of how to do it works, I think we're just gonna get our nuts and who's voting in favor of what.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So from a construct, but as far as contract, I think.
I like it, yes.
That line name number three, not.
Yeah, it's kind of like.
Think guy voted yes, this guy voted no.
It's a very easy, right?
Not gonna.
Did you tell me it was a one liner?
Oh, yeah.
Most really, yeah, so.
One sentence. We've got, I got a little, I got a little optimistic, but.
Way to do it. Not an attorney on that board. I haven't been to the least. This is me that's doing this. Also, I did have one time to judge, right? I said, I waited for. Eight months for her to do a ruling. She was retiring. And I got it back and I said, then I. And he passed, eight months and he couldn't.
Deny it.
Uh, all right, so we gotta do the same thing for two. Yeah, we'll come back to those, but at least just, let's leave the structure. Like that for now, and I just want to see if there's any other structural things that we got to play around with. I gotta come back, the knots, we have to change the. Language on a little bit, but that's. It's not as up into traffic, right? So. Right. So I, we have to change that, right? On there. The use will not be reasonably valid, reasonably compatible with the character and scale of other uses when, because of like increased traffic and project. Oh, so it's right, and so that's.
But to be fair, the justification needs to be.
We just got to tweak that a little bit, but we can come back. You want you to highlight it, we'll come back to that.
Don't, please don't.
No, that's fine. And, but go back up to one. I just want to make sure what I said. Yeah, that makes sense to me. I think that's consistent, so. That's fine, I always got a tweet to. Okay, but we can come back to that.
Okay.
Uh, because that's for. Three through seventeen, I think it's fine, right? So that'll.
Be a little careful.
Well, I. Is this the version that, but we already did it, didn't we?
I need to. Just repair a shoe.
Okay, no, no, don't look too close there.
Just like it.
Let me get back to where he left. You put this in this?
Yeah.
I felt like sort of a different way, yes, you did. I, I was. I walked in with that. Okay. Design. Training. Minimize. Why is that? One jar noise or should be told use.
Okay, that's sorry. That's where you have to stop. I am what is considered all the above criteria. And. And then I have to get the, but as two members. Mind that they have not all been met. Special permit may not be. Right? No, no. After the.
Yeah. They were. Yep. Satisfied with that.
I don't know how many times I've done that.
My natural thing is it twice. One time.
First time every time. Get that bond. Kill myself.
Okay. And then. Right? And then we don't need to get into. Or condition, Brian, like that, because. You stop after that point. So then. The explanation of denial is in there. Dick, since it's me and you, why don't you just. Offer any. Suggesting changes as. You go through this with the explanation of denial.
The word not has already been used.
I pretty much appreciate what you have.
Okay. And then what's after the explanation of denial here?
Well, then I move on to the vote. I'm not sure if you want to structure that to reflect. Although I think you. You made the accommodations in this document necessary to show that, okay, there was. Some division, two members did not. Now find that all the. Commissions were met to issue a special permit. So that's something that. The board has called in.
Right? I think we just, you might, why don't you scroll down to the chart and we can, you might have to just tweak the language.
What's that? We all just roll past?
Hold on, hold on, we can go through it. I, but I just wanted to. Go through it. No, it's fine.
Go. I'm sorry.
And actually, we pick up the we at the end there, too.
Yeah.
Two members.
Okay. Okay. Let me get back to.
Yeah, just go through, get me. I don't know where this. I think it's much time, so you don't need to read through.
But is that okay for magnification?
Yeah. I writing the most.
Yeah, at the beginning, it's just a good presentation.
Yeah.
I don't know if I agree with the statement that it can be divided into distinct sections. Sections. Good.
So this is. This is, this is.
Specifically coming from explanation of denial. I just want to make it clear. Just seems like a statement of fact. A stink section.
If you. You keep reading and tell me if you. Disagree, that's fine.
Are you saying you should think you have some language in there that says those who voted not in favor? Calling the following rationale is there, whatever.
I don't care. I mean, that's fine. I. I could, you guys put whatever language you want in there. I, I just titled that explanation of the night, right? So. That obviously implied the people who.
Divided.
Yeah, I, I don't care. Caveat is. I don't, I'm not trying to, I clearly know you guys don't agree.
Is there more?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could.
Oh, that's all there is.
Yeah, I'm telling you, it's gonna pay by the words, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I was saying either that or well, before I seen that, so I'm saying maybe in that. One B, you both there for the reasons described, reading for denial below or something like that.
Okay.
Oh, God.
I'm not saying.
Two dollars and ninety nine cent box of funny pants. Won't be showing up in this town.
Are you now?
Oops, so. Voted Angela sixteen twenty twenty four. As follows regarding. And then I think instead of just. I think you basically have. Basically have two separate lines, right? The one, first one, you write either.
Getting there.
What are we writing? Voting to approve. Or voting in favor slash to approve. Slash to deny.
Yeah, proof deny, whatever. You have the signature line, right? So I just think you could have that. Well, you're not even a line, you can just write it, maybe in all caps right before the signature. Right, so you're right. Right? No, right there, I would write in like all caps, I'd write. Denied or denied. And then tab over, then you have the signature, right?
I thought you got section, I don't have voting to deny your name.
Like this.
I said his name and then voting to approve.
Oh, yeah, you could do it that. I don't.
Who's got more energy? I think you're the loudest voice in the room. Well, here's where I come from. Hope you enjoyed that.
I just. I've done that so many times.
Why, why?
Yeah. That worked. I'm done. I don't care either way. But that might be easier probably five weeks.
So I suppose just, I just want to make sure.
Vote of three in favor and two, oh, two in favor of denial.
I voted two in favor of the dial three in favor of approval.
Yeah.
Did you make note that a super majority was needed?
And comma with. With. Four out of the five. Votes required for approval. I heard the question, I think we have. For. Yeah. Yeah. I think that's right. So that makes sense to people. I think that's fine. And then. We just got to go back up down to the. Be way up or do. You know what? Go back down. Sorry. Let's go run through the end of it. I just want to make sure there's something else that we need to change before we go back up. Like through the record of.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, is there anything? Oh, do you get basically.
Well, you gotta go on on each, so basically just. Take that back.
But I got to, that's garbage.
Do we.
Put it all in one? So, well.
Yeah, it's the application that's there, so you gotta have.
Alright. Alright, I'll set that.
Yeah, basically just take that first one, copy, cut and paste, and then change it to storm water management, right?
Well, no, special term.
So. I chewed this up a little bit. Down counts about whether we craft a separate. Decision because this is all the performance standards satisfied, but there's no project.
So you don't ever get there because it's.
Did they move? That's the word.
Okay. So why don't you delete that? And why don't we note that folks go up a little bit? And then after denied period, why don't you just add in? The, oh, you know what? Why don't you put the application for a special permit and say. Sorry.
We got site.
You have to go all the way to the top, the record is out there. That should just be for special permits, safe man approval, right? And then at the end, we'll note that as such, this. Application for storm water management permit is. Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Go where to, I turned it over to you.
You're saying is that consistent with what Martin said?
Uh. Most people, the extent of my conversation went, hey, do I need to craft a separate approval for this because we're satisfying the stormwater standards? We don't have a mechanism. There probably should be one in the.
That's fine. That's great. You're good. Yep.
Okay.
There's nothing else we need to change in the. That's all fine. Okay.
Printed.
No, we just got to do one last thing and then we're done. Up to page like two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Satisfied with the.
So yes, A. One A and one and two A, you guys just make sure you're, I think you guys were fine with that, right? In the last one. So.
Yeah.
So one B. Which is not.
I'm sorry.
You know what? We're gonna do it, we're doing this right. Make the more sense. Erase. In, in one B. Where it says because. All the way to the end of the sentence, erase that. And write. For the reasons. Described alone. In, in, what do we call it? Right?
Yep.
And then just take the same job. You pop it in too late. And then we're done.
Yeah. I think the only thing. Maybe. Where it says in favor and not in favor, speaking with the voting. Things to say. Of to, to approve and to deny or something like that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Well then. Right, right. Yeah, that negative got me. It's approved.
Thank you for bringing some joy to the process. It's right here. Still down here. Oh, for.
Yeah, drag the box.
We're not gonna let you get away with that.
I'm grateful I have a sympathetic. In uniform.
All right. Are we okay with this?
For the reasons.
Okay. Everybody good? All right. Do I hear a motion to? Accept the written decision. Obviously. As, as. As it applies, it applies to your particular. Right?
Right, Jason Zobo.
Kick out singer second.
We'll call Michael's already high base being high.
Kick out singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Okay. Well, that's all said. Okay. Oh, we lost Diddy, so.
Over in one second.
We.
I will fix a little left and right pictures. I will. Come in. A bright and relevant nature this gets recorded with Don Clark tomorrow and distribute to the party that has a request.
When do we get start signing things again?
Yeah. It does take away some of the romance.
That's the A and R plan mood. And ours.
Takes the girl right out of it.
I know.
All the sink.
To Mr. Dee's point, I didn't. Didn't make my report just yet because I have not sent. I feel my report back to town council, and I don't think you stopped me at something that sounds on door here. But we are all aware of the fact that Verizon was exploring alternate locations. And a request routed through town council was for me and or planning board member to take a look. At a site, give it a cursory review, cursor re-review under the now changed by law. Understanding that virtually speaking, every location is, anybody can apply for anything, right? And so we've run it through Johnson's formal bringer. I did take the time to consult. I was just starting. My findings. I might as well go into a little bit of detail. The locations we examined was at the Pioneer. On rear acreage, I would say. And. Our review found that. Reinstallation, at least at the hundred fifty foot maximum height. At that location would likely impact view sheds from certain locations, certainly from the east. And perhaps others as well. The northeast from that location. The specific location was behind the first house block. But if you take the industrialized portion of that property. We travel west. And that would have our first outside. We have parameters that talk about. When. The planning board may consider. Approving a location that isn't at least one and a half times. In the height of. I'll give him one ten location. I find it very difficult that. Conditions could be found, given at the radius of that. About one and a half. Times factor falls well onto a residential property and into yard space. So while the, while the. While the rules, the mat there is, you know, available. It's, I don't think the implementation of those rules was intended to be for a developed residential site. Perhaps if someone had twenty acres and this was off the back of the agreement, then sure, you can put it. Maybe one time the whole of the elevation of the pole. And then set up parameters that might affect a portion of approval. But, but in a nutshell, this was not a particularly. This is not a glowing example. I think of how it would get into about so, so to Mr. Daisy, very in little free, I reported the next meetings. And I will be sharing that with town council. Sharing. Our things and. Well, cursing buttons.
I mean, I don't know where it's. Supposed to be located on that property, but. But that property had. Had part of it in. The former district where you could have a salt tower, I think, and it was an issue back then. It was discussed back at the. Hearing, I think, right? If it was put in the.
Which it, because it was included into the overlay district because it was a business owned parcel. That was the depths of the. Creation.
And the only way to put it. Was potentially in that top corner. But then it didn't work. I thought we already had this discussion about the property.
It was shown in the records of that previous hearing that it was, it was an alternative. I think it's maybe.
It was floated and roundfully, I think, kind of scoffed at when it was first floated by Verizon.
Because you have all those residences.
And the clearing necessary.
Yep.
To get to that site to establish a pad site for a tower there. Would eliminate. So much of the current. Buffer from vegetation that it would not only be visible from the north, northeast, but I think it would be your. Welcome to South. Basically. Not to me, not, and that is notwithstanding the fact that it was already extremely close. To multiple residential properties, resident and yards that would be within the fall zone. But, you know, never even mind just general distances and trying to keep it into a. Reasonable location. I don't think this. This floated. Location met up to snuff.
Yeah.
You could disagree, of course.
And I think even that, I mean, even the fall zone probably has to be still because you're falling down. I mean.
That's an engineering question.
Again. So. Yeah, I don't know what, what happened to what's his name. Oh, Ron Foster.
Who knows what goes on in the minds of the cell code.
That was not the question.
People.
Totally passed my desk.
Okay. Is there something else?
No, that was the goal of the staff comment. Remember, we appreciate that this is fun and appreciate your assistance. And at least. Make sure I share with the board. Joe for to be.
Anything else? Any other planning board member comments? Okay. No minutes.
Makes motion to close the meeting.
They used to be in a second. All is in favor. I.